Good morning and welcome to the July 19th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, I have a few announcements this morning, so bear with me. Tonight, we, Interest Bank Arena will host Paul McCartney and his World Tour. Doors open at 6:30 PM. The new security policy will be in place at the arena. And remember that entrance C, the north entrance, is currently under construction, but it will be open to handle guests coming to the event tonight. On Saturday and Sunday, be sure to head on over to Exploration Place for the Mini Maker Fair. And this, more information will be available at exploration.org. Commissioners, our first budget hearing for the 2018 recommended budget is this morning. We will also have a social media town hall on the budget, and that will be on Tuesday, July 25th at 2:00 PM. So follow us along on social media. And our third, or excuse me, our second public hearing for the budget will be Monday, July 31st at 6:00 PM here on the third floor of the county courthouse, 525 North Main. And if you're not able to attend or take part in any of those public hearings, we do have our online forum available. It's on our homepage of the website. That's found at sedgwickcounty.org. And those are my announcements this morning, Chairman. So I will hand the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you, Kate, and I appreciate the announcements about the various ways that our citizens can become involved and express their opinion about the 2018 budget. So thank you for that.
Yes.
Want to welcome everyone to the boardroom today. We do have a potential, at least, for an interesting meeting today with a public hearing. So with that, I will call the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order July 19th, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
In vocation, a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Unruh.
Present. And next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, I haven't had anyone sign up to speak on specific issues this morning before our meeting, so we will continue and ask for the next item.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation from Bill Faflick in the education position of the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item A is a resolution to accept the resignation of Mr. Faflick from the education position of the juvenile advisory board. Mr. Faflick is moving out of the community. He was an at-large appointee, and his term would have expired June 30th of 2018. So he will need to be replaced for that, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioners. What's the will of the board?
I move that we accept the resignation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Just a couple of comments. I've known Bill Faflick for a lot of years. He was the athletic director on our first medium of USD 259 when I was working over at North High School, and I was announcer for North High School at that time, before I moved over to Northwest, announced for them. I served on the Kansas State High School Activities Association Executive Board of Directors with Bill. I worked with him as he was Assistant Superintendent for USD 259. He's going to be sorely missed in our community. I just want to pass on my congratulations in his new job as the Director of Kansas State High School Activities Association up in Topeka. So I'm sure I'll still be able to work with him. But I just wanted to tell everyone how much I appreciated working with him over the years, how much he contributed to the youth in Wichita.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I would second those comments. Had the privilege of worshiping with Bill for several years at our home church, and he is a great community citizen. He will be missed. Seeing no more comment, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And next item.
New business. Item B, public hearing regarding the 2018 Sedgwick County budget.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager. It's great to be here today, today being the first public hearing for the 2018 budget. The publication filed with you last week was a total budget of $407,276,187 and an adverbal property tax levy of $137,441,377, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. With that, Commissioners, we can start the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the manager before we begin the public hearing? I see none, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak on the budget. So if you step to the podium and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, in Wichita. And I want to compliment both the budget and the process. You know, last year, when our new county manager presented his budget, I recall that he was a commander of a war zone. So I was preparing myself for some slash and burn, maybe even some blood on the floor. But instead, I got the opposite. You know, he raised some salaries for employees, added some safety personnel, didn't cut services, and had a surplus. It was almost like magic. I think he's done the same thing again with this budget. You know, he's recognized employees, added public safety, had another surplus, but again, this time, he's been able to add some services. So as far as I'm concerned, he's Magic Mike. I want to tell the Commission how much I appreciate the transparency and openness of the budget process. It makes this so much easier for us to understand how the county and the departments work. I'm referring to your public hearings, where instead of the departments just dealing with the manager, they deal directly with you, and they summarize what they're doing and the challenges, and it's open to the public. Secondly, reading the budget online is easy. Instead of having to scroll down a bunch of pages, through the hundreds of pages, looking at numbers, you can just click on each item and go back and forth. So I want to say I'm pleased with both Magic Mike and the process, and thank you for your transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate that, those very, very kind words. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the budget for 2018? I see no one rising to speak, and I don't recognize someone that I, from the public. So that being the case, we won't linger here. No one wishing to speak, so therefore, we will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, do you have any comments before we move on? All right, this doesn't take any action from the board, so we will just close the public hearing and announce once more that our next opportunity for citizens to weigh in at a public hearing is in the evening of July 31st. Is that, is that correct? All right, thank you. And then, social media interaction is on, what day did Kate say that was?
July 25.
Okay, July 25. I don't know much about social media, that's one reason I'm stumbling, but we can go online for that form at any time on our website. Okay. That being the case, Commissioners, we will move on to the next item of business. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Item C, discussion of emergency ambulance services agreement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm not Magic Mike, but I'll do my best. I am Eric Yost, County Counselor, and I, item C is the proposed agreement between the county and the city of Wichita related to EMS services. Just by way of background, the city did take this matter up yesterday. They did approve it, they did modify it also, and what I'm asking to be handed out is the new language that they have approved. Sedgwick County, of course, has been the exclusive, exclusive provider of emergent medical ambulance service in Sedgwick County since 1975, and the exclusive provider of non-emergent services since 1985. And we are currently operating under a, an agreement from 2003, which was a five-year agreement with automatic renewals every year, and it's been renewed every year. But during this last year, we have been discussing with the city certain changes we would want to make to that agreement. Those negotiations have resulted in what you have in front of you today. Many of those discussions have been conducted by members of our commission and members of the city council, and, with some help from council in drafting the language. I think everyone is in agreement that the emergency side of these medical services, the ambulance services, has been exemplary. No one has been stated any unhappiness with that. I think it's actually a model for the whole state and nation, how we handle emergency ambulance services. We've been talking about the non-emergent services, and in, in the agreement that you have in front of you, paragraphs six and 10 relate to all of that. Paragraph six, as it is, as it is in front of you today, states that there, that our goal is to have a non-emergent response time of one hour or less 100% of the time. But that, we know we have to hold, be held, actually held to a certain standard and be required to meet that standard, and so that standard is one hour or less response time 98% of the time. And that's what has been written into the language. It is up to the county how to achieve that. They can do that, we can do that by either enhancing our capabilities, meaning added personnel, added ambulances, stations, or we can contract with third-party providers if we wish to do that. And that is our, at our sole option and discretion. If the county chooses to go, to have third-party, they can control that process entirely, according to this language. And it also states that the private providers must meet the same standard that we meet as far as response time. The county has also agreed that it will make best efforts to secure a list of vendors. The city understands that that may not be possible. There may, there may be a lack of interest, or people may not be qualified, because they do have to meet certain qualifications. And if you look at the agreement you have in front of you, in paragraph six, on page three, you have certain standards. I won't read through them all, but it's pretty rigorous, and possible people, a lot of people won't meet those qualifications. So if, and we have language in the agreement that you have in front of you that says that if, if there, if no one qualifies, or if no one has an interest in doing this, that does not constitute a breach of contract by us. If EMS fails to meet the standard of one hour or less 98% of the time for two consecutive quarters, a rehabilitation plan must be prepared by EMS and provided to the city, and then they will have two additional quarters to try to implement that plan. Again, it's our sole option and discretion as to whether or not to enhance our own capabilities with that, or to use third-party providers. If, at the end of those four quarters, the standard still has been, has not been, we have not been brought into compliance by that, the city has the option, under this agreement, to provide written notice of termination. The notice would have to be for at least 180 days out, but they have the right to terminate the agreement under those circumstances. We have agreed to compile a list of those qualified providers, as I stated, to the extent that we can do so, and to the extent that they are qualified. The new language, though, and I, and I would direct your attention to that on page four, the yellow highlight that we've distributed to you, their new language states that if, if we know that when someone calls us and we're not going to be able to be there within an hour, that we must call off that list and, and provide them with that transport. That's the new language that the city council adopted yesterday. And we have also some reference in, in paragraph 10 that says that in doing all this and helping to implement this program, that we have, we provide reports to the city. We will provide reports on a quarterly basis, but if we ever fall below the standard of 98% at any given month, we then have to report monthly until that has been rectified. This is an agreement for an initial term of five years with automatic renewals of three one-year terms. So the most, the longest this can go, under the current language, is eight years. Either party can choose to not renew after the first five years by simply giving notice by July 1st of that given year. This is a little bit different than the 2003 agreement, in that the 2003 agreement was something that could be renewed annually without any action by any party in perpetuity. They can give notice to quit by July 1 of any year, but it was, it would have gone on as long as anybody wanted to. This does not. This isn't, this has an eight-year limit. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. I know that Mr. Hadley's here for any technical questions related to EMS.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yost. We appreciate that synopsis of this contract. And Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? If there are questions or comments, now's the time. What is the will of the board? I will allow public comment, but I'd like to see if there's any Commission comment first, and I don't see any, but we can, we can go ahead if you'd like to have public comment now, that's fine with me. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? I see no one rising to speak, so Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a number of comments. First of all, I'm not a lifelong politician, so everything I'm going to say is probably not politically correct, okay? First, though, I do want to thank a number of people. Our county manager, Mike Scholes, and his staff were fantastic. Tom Stoles gave me advice that was unmatched. Scott Hadley and his folks, and especially his EMS folks, that really are the ones that we're doing all this for. We're very proud of them. We're very proud of the record that they've had. And the people that we're really fighting for is not only our EMS folks, but all of the citizens here in Sedgwick County. And all of those citizens in Sedgwick County are our, in Wichita, are citizens of Sedgwick County. So we care very deeply about each one of those folks. Some other folks that were deeply involved in this is Eric Yost and his staff, especially Misha, who's left, Karen, who's worked it after Misha's departure. So I want to give credit to each one of those folks that were involved in, in what happened here. This process stretched over a number of months, actually. During that number of months, I'm not certain that the city of Wichita negotiated in good faith as we moved forward. They moved the bar every time that we had a new contract supposedly put together. My folder here is all of the different versions of contracts that we put together over those months. Every time we sent something across and we thought we had an agreement, we found out we didn't have an agreement. We went across the street and city manager, Leighton, said that we were going to have a contract, so we went over there, and a group of us went over to watch them vote on it, only to find out that they weren't going to vote on it. We then had an en banc, well, actually, in between, we had another side meeting with some of the folks that had been negotiating, and then we had an en banc meeting. And I think that meeting was kind of enlightening to some extent, in the fact that it appeared to me that all of our discussions weren't entirely about this EMS contract. I think there was an underlying distrust from the city of Wichita with the county commission. What they haven't done is haven't opened their blinds lately and recognize that there is a different county commission sitting over here than there had been in the past. But I think they're still trying to basically poke a stick in the eye of county commission at times. They were making sausage yesterday when they decided from the bench to add seven new words to the contract. They had that existing contract that we gave them about a week and a half to two weeks ago, and not once in that week and a half to two weeks did we hear a single word that there was a problem with that contract. A number of us went out to watch the change of command ceremony instead of going over to the city council meeting yesterday, because we were assured once again, and the words were directly, "You've got 7-0, it's going to be voted 7-0." That was direct words that we received on what this was going to be. So I didn't have any worry about not going to the meeting yesterday and not speaking, because I was under the impression that it was going to be 7-0. But what we found out was, even at the en banc, when things that had happened at this commission prior to this, at the previous commission, prior to this body that has its meeting today, they are still holding a grudge on it. They even mentioned it at the en banc. So if that's truly, truly the way that they feel, I think that they need to start worrying, just as I do, about our citizens. Truly, yesterday, when I saw these seven words, and it is a material change to the contract, I was at the point where that I was going to delay this contract so that we could go back and see if we could negotiate again. Some cooler heads, actually, came and spoke to me, several of them, and reminded me once again of my own words, that we're doing this for the citizens, and we're not doing it for us. And if I'm going to delay it, then I'm guilty of exactly what I'm blaming the county, or the city council of doing, is holding a grudge, and I'm certainly not doing that. I've promised when I ran that I was going to be a good partner, and that's what I've tried to be all along. I'm not sure that all seven members over there are trying to be good partners. And one thing I totally don't understand is how that one member over there, even though we promised 100%, can still say that that's not good enough and votes every time no. So bottom line, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the contract of the ambulance service as written, as amended by the city council, because I think it's the best thing for the citizens in Sedgwick County, especially the citizens in Wichita. We've got a huge investment. We've got like $30 million investment just in infrastructure and people. We spend $16 million a year just in the city of Wichita on what it costs us for salaries for the people that are serving our citizens in Wichita. We can't jeopardize an investment that large. We can't jeopardize the health and welfare of the citizens in the city of Wichita. So that's why I make my motion. And again, I'm sorry if I'm not politically correct, but I was not pleased with the fact that we did not know until we were sitting out there at the change of command ceremony and received a text that there was any question whatsoever on what we sent over two weeks ago. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a motion to-
Second.
-approve the contract, and we have a second. Is there further discussion from the Commissioners? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the previous speaker's comments. I have some questions about a couple of the aspects of the contract, I'd like to ask for some clarity. By reading the contract, looks to me like if we believe we're not going to make the call within 60 minutes, that we're the ones that have to make the call to the third party. Is that correct? Other words, Sedgwick County has to make the call to the third party?
Commissioner Howell, Scott Hadley, EMS, that is correct, that we would make that decision on whether to call that third party. That would be EMS's call.
Okay. And again, how many of these, can you, please remind, please remind me, like, I guess in 2016, how many times do we have, did we not make our 60-minute threshold?
I don't recall 2016 off the top of my head, but 2017, for the first six months, city of Wichita, and we're excluding Wesley, because we have a contract with him to provide service, was 18 calls that were over an hour, within the corporate city limits of Wichita, January 1st through June 30th of 2017.
I'm just curious, on those 18 calls, do we know, maybe you can answer this, I don't know if this is information that you have or not, but how many of those 18 calls do we know at the beginning of that hour that we weren't going to make it in an hour?
I can't give you a good answer. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, on the 18, that we knew upfront that we were so busy, there's no way we can make it an hour. There may have been some. I think it's fair to say that we may have known, but others, it's not that clear, because we dispatch a unit, and they may get preempted to go to an emergency call and get called off that, so that, that happens quite frequently.
Yeah, I, that's my, excuse me, that's my understanding, is we do use our regular, our regular vehicles, our regular paramedic crew to do these non-emergency, non-emergency transports, and if they're the closest resource to an emergent issue, they're going to be redirected, I would think.
Correct, and that's the way it should work, yes.
And again, I, I don't know, but, you know, if we had a, a non-emergent crew that simply did not provide, you know, the same type of skill set, perhaps they could stay focused on, on meeting their, meeting their appointments or whatever. But to the extent we've got an emergency crew that's doing this type of work, they do get redirected, and so it does make sense to me that that's probably, out of those 18, I'm going to guess that at least, at least a good majority of them probably are of that, of that type, that they got redirected. So let me ask a question. So let's say we are planning to be somewhere to do a non-emergency transport, let's say we will plan to be there within the hour, let's say about 40 minutes into that call, we get redirected. At that point, we call the third party? Is that what we have to do? Do they have an hour at that point for them to respond?
They would have to meet the same requirements that we are. Granted, we're 40 minutes into it, but the, the goal is-
They're not going to be there in 20 minutes, so-
Correct.
They have another whole hour.
Correct.
So theoretically, this could be a two-hour wait by even using third party. We could, we have up to an hour.
It could.
We could call third party, you know, five minutes from the end of our time limit, and then they could, they have another whole hour.
Yeah, they could be busy, they could not be available, there's a variety of things that could occur for us not to be- There's a variety of things that could occur for us not to be there within that hour.
But this way this contract is written, we absolutely have to call that third party. We don't have a choice to redeploy a different unit.
We could-
The way this is written, it says, according to that paragraph that was edited yesterday, it says, "We must call from the list of third-party providers."
If we know we're not going to be there in an hour, and again, we don't always know, and it could be at shift change, we could hold a unit over to have them make the call and not call the third party. There are flexibility and options that-
Let me ask the question differently. Okay, so let's say 45 minutes into this call, this ambulance gets redirected to an emergency issue situation, we know we're not going to make that in 60 minutes-
Correct.
-as required.
Correct.
The way this is written, we have, the only option we have at that point is to call a third party, even if we have another resource that can get there in 25 minutes. It doesn't matter. We have to call from this third-party list, and they have a full hour to get there. You see my point? In other words, if we're into that hour, a significant amount of time-
Correct.
-and we find out we're not going to make it, we have to call off this third-party list, and they have a full hour to respond, even if we have other resources that could have made it. Maybe the reason that we're not going to make the hours is because the closest resource to an actual emergency was, they were planning to do this non-emergency transport, but they got redirected. And let's say that was 45 minutes into a 60-minute call-
Right.
-a 60-minute response time. Now we've got 15 minutes, and we know we're not going to make it in 15 minutes.
Correct.
The next resource is 20 minutes away. What this says is now we have to call from a third-party list-
Yes.
-and they have a full hour to respond. Am I correct in saying it that way? That's what this says?
Yes.
That's what I believe this says.
And they would have an hour to respond.
Let me ask a couple of other questions. If this, if we did not adopt this today, and I perceive, based on my colleagues' comments already, I'm sure this is probably going to pass, but assume for just a minute this did not pass, what would be the next step? We would not have a contract, they would, presumably Wichita would notify us, they're not going to renew the contract. We would start then negotiations on a new contract, I would assume.
They could.
Is that what happened?
They could give notice. They have till the end of the month to provide that letter of notice that they didn't want to renew it. They could renegotiate that between now and then. There's a variety of things that could occur should you not approve it today.
But if we did not approve it, then again, it doesn't mean we don't have EMS services in Sedgwick County.
Correct.
It means we have got to continue our discussions with the city of Wichita.
Right. Our current contract carries us through the end of the year.
We've essentially gone through the process as if they've given us notice. We've renegotiated a contract in good faith, as if we've already received notice, so to speak, that the old contract wasn't going to be acceptable to them. So we've been doing that process all along. To me, this is a little bit arbitrary, whether this is adopted today, because we've been negotiating for, how many months has this been going on now? Several months at least.
Yes.
In fact, I would say since last year, we've been talking about this contract. And so if this was not adopted today, it doesn't mean we don't have EMS services in Sedgwick County. It means the conversation would continue.
Correct.
I listened to the meeting yesterday, although I did go to the change of command ceremony with Commissioner Dennis. I did listen to that meeting intently, listened to all the comments of the city council members, and it was obvious to me that many of the members were, well, at least one of the members was very interested in just providing freedom of choice to his constituents, and I believe that was the compelling reason why he voted no. He doesn't think we need to manage this part of it. And I, again, I walked into the meeting today literally on the fence. I see arguments to vote yes, and I see arguments to vote no. And on the side of voting no, I think I understand the arguments of Councilmember Clint Denon, that he wants to provide choice to the people he serves. And I think that's a commendable position to take. We talk about free market, we talk about choice, and it could be, you know, what do we charge typically for a non-emergency transport with someone with the ability to pay? What would that charge be?
Our current charge for that level for a non-emergent basic life support is $350 plus $13 a mile.
Okay, so someone's going to probably pay around $400 bucks, just say, and it could be the third party, might be half that, we don't know. So once again, if there's no emergency, you know, allowing the people to shop around and get something they could potentially more afford, that might be something that we ought to allow them to do that. On the other side of the equation, I'm concerned about upsetting our revenue stream, because I think we've got a very good balance of EMS services that depends on revenue for it to fully operate, and I am concerned about upsetting that balance. And so, you know, if we're only talking about 18 ambulance rides in 2017, I don't think this is, that's not a significant amount. I don't know what that calculates out to, but to say all 18 of those chose a third-party provider, it's not going to substantially upset our balance of our EMS services otherwise. You see my point?
Sure.
Does that make sense? Am I misunderstanding something here?
No.
Okay. So I guess I see that my concern about the revenue stream is maybe a little overstated. I'm not sure. I have a concern about that so much because it's not a substantial number of people who would have that option. I don't know. If they did choose to terminate the agreement, again, either, if we did not adopt this today and they wanted to terminate that, the conversation would continue. But within this agreement, if they choose to, let's say we don't make 98% two quarters, they have the option to terminate the contract at that point.
No.
They give us notice, excuse me, they have given us notice that, no.
After two quarters, if we don't meet 98%, we have to provide them a rehabilitation plan to address that. Then we have two additional quarters to come back in compliance.
Okay. I remember that's correct. But then, that could be any time of the year that that would happen. It could be any quarter of the year that we would come to that fourth quarter. That could happen in March, or June, or September.
Yeah, it had to be two consecutive quarters that we fall below that mark.
So that could happen, basically, when we're far away from a budget cycle, potentially.
Yes.
That's another concern, I guess. Again, this, I think this is intended to create a new contract starting January the 1st-
Correct.
...of a calendar year. But we potentially might end up having, might have to adjust our contract with the city that would start sometime, that would not be matched up with the calendar year. In other words, we might have to start a new contract potentially in March, when we didn't have a budget cycle to adjust our revenue expectations, so to speak, because it's no longer tied to a calendar year. It could happen in any quarter. You might be into the situation where we have to renegotiate a new contract and adopt a new contract.
I don't know that we have to renegotiate it, but we have, if we fall below that 98% for two consecutive quarters, we have a remediation plan in place, and then we have two more quarters to have corrective action and get above 98%. Once that happens, we don't have to negotiate anything.
Okay. If we get to that fourth quarter, if we haven't met a 98% and the city wishes to do, go forward, do they terminate, could they give us notice at that point to terminate?
They could give us 180 days' notice if we fail in the remediation period. They could give notice, doesn't mean they will.
The end of that 180 days could be any time in the calendar year. Any, it could be-
Yes.
-virtually any quarter. Okay. My point is it gets us out of a calendar year cycle, potentially.
Right.
So I just want to make that point.
Okay.
Okay. See, I had, I think, one other question. And if, and again, if, I would brush rather, I guess, if we were, if we know we're not going to make the hour, I guess I'd prefer it if we would let the person that needs the service know that, let them call from that list. I think that would be preferable to me. I don't know that I want to be responsible to make that call on their behalf. What happens if the third party is busy and now it's assumed that they're going to be there within one hour, but they only have limited resources in the county as well? Let's say they're busy. What happens then if they can't make the hour? They don't think they can make it in one hour, then what happens?
Then we make it as soon as we can. We won't be there, no one will be there within the hour, and we let the patient know that, that it's going to be longer for them, they're going to have to wait longer.
Well, I'll tell you, I have a number of concerns about this contract. The words that they added yesterday, in my opinion, are concerning for one reason, that is that I think the county's done a tremendous job of getting this number to 98%, and actually we have exceeded 98%, and we're committing in this contract to stay there, above 98%. To me, that's a huge commitment, and I appreciate our EMS personnel, they do a tremendous job. You do a tremendous job. It's taken a lot of investment on Sedgwick County by taxpayers to get us to this high level of service. It's a very high standard, and it's not perfect, but nothing by anybody is perfect. You know, I think to have a government agencies operating at 98% is just a tremendous, high standard for us to benchmark ourselves. And so I'm extremely impressed with what we're currently doing, but one thing that bothers me about this is, in the words that were added yesterday, in my opinion, it actually puts us in a corner. I have a concern about whether or not that makes sense. Maybe the next provider is 20 minutes away, but we don't have the option to call them. I think that this is intending to, this is intending to resolve how we would manage this issue, but I think it falls short. It doesn't actually give us all the options that it should. And I think it really ought to be up to Sedgwick County service management, it would be the director, or the manager, or others that have input into our system. It ought to be up to them to determine the best ways to resolve those kinds of things when they happen, and let us manage the system. Again, I think if we're going to manage a system, we ought to be allowed to manage a system. But this, the words they added yesterday puts us in the corner, and I think that that, it attempts to solve a problem, but I think it actually limits our options, and it actually is trying to tell us exactly how they think that ought to be solved. In reality, I think that it falls short because it limits what we can do to solve the problem. So I guess I have concerns about that. I would say I appreciate the negotiations. I know that our chairman and pro tem, and I think Commissioner Dennis, have spent a lot of their time meeting with people at the city, negotiating ideas, and I agree with Commissioner Dennis, there's been a series of proposals, one after the other, and I felt that the last contract that was given to them was fairly good, and people, I thought, were agreeable to that, but with changes they made yesterday, it makes me feel less, I don't agree with this as much as I did before. But I do appreciate those that negotiated, I appreciate our friends across the street. I know they want the best for the citizens, as I think we do as well. But I think what's best for the citizens is maybe the previous contract. And so I guess right now, I'm probably going to not support going forward. I think that the small delay would be much more appropriate. We just got this language yesterday, we haven't even had time to talk about this in any way. We received the language, and in my opinion, this is just very, very late change, and it has a major significance to what we do here. So I guess I would be much more willing to support the contract potentially in a week, but I think delaying this one week would be much more reasonable. I'm not going to make a substitute motion. I think I've already heard the three commissioners want to move forward, that's fine. I would be willing to support this potentially, once we have some time to talk about some of these details, but right now, as it sits, I'm not going to support it. So again, I want to say I appreciate you, Director Hadley. I appreciate our EMS personnel, I think we've got one of the best systems in the nation. I think we are, we're doing things very, very well, and to be critical of that system and not let us manage this at that high standard, I think is just a mistake. So I think that this contract falls short, and for that reasons, I'm not going to support this one. Thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as far as commissioners are concerned, I've probably been the most sympathetic to the city's concerns. As such, I continue to have problems or concerns with this contract as well, albeit somewhat differently than my colleagues. I'm actually okay with the language that was inserted. And like I say, I have several issues with this contract, but for brevity's sake, I'm only going to mention two. First of all, I think as a result of this protracted negotiations, Paragraph 6 has become very convoluted, confusing, you might even say contradictory. And if we ever had a dispute over this, it would be a mess, I think, trying to iron that out. I would suggest that as everything calms down, that maybe at some point, we would want to go back and take a look at that and perhaps see if we can come to better wording for that whole thing. But, and then the second thing is, we've been talking about calls over 60 minutes or 45 minutes, I think that was, and, you know, I had Scott Hadley do an analysis, if we gave up every call over 60 minutes, that would cost us $12,000 in revenue. And I feel like we've been spending a lot of time and effort just to protect $12,000 in revenue, while at the same time, I'm not sure we've done a cost-benefit analysis to see if it's even worth arguing about or debating about this. I mean, as the response, percentage of responses goes up, that have to be within an hour within a certain timeframe, the amount of resources you have to put into it to achieve that goal outpaces the revenue. And so there's a cost-benefits that could get out of whack over time. I'm concerned we're maybe past that. So as we move forward and we do this, and there again, as things calm down, I think we should look at this. We may find that actually, by partnering with third parties after a certain time, whether it's 60 minutes, 45, 30 minutes, we actually may be able to improve services to the community while at the same time directing more of our services towards emergent and be able to provide service in a more cost-effective manner. I think that's a very distinct possibility. We've been given a monopoly, and we've kind of acted like a monopoly, and we're doing everything we can to preserve that monopoly, every single call we want, but I'm not sure if we did a cost-benefit analysis, we would come to the conclusion that it was actually cost-effective for the taxpayer and in everyone's best interest. That being said, I know there's been a lot of negotiations, back and forth. I appreciate everyone involved on both sides. The city has voted to support this current agreement, and I think the majority of my colleagues are willing to do so as well. And so with, the only last caveat I would say is I think, as far as the city's concerned, they expect these six words to make a difference, and I think we should exercise this contract in good faith in exercising Paragraph 6, as convoluted as it is as we move forward. But nevertheless, those are my comments, and I will be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. I would just say that this has been an arduous process and sometimes somewhat frustrating, but I think that's the way it is sometimes, excuse me, in partnerships where there is a lot of back and forth. I just would want to make a couple of statements here to say, one, a clarification that we're talking about non-emergency medical transports. So these are folks who are not in any sort of crises. Now, we find that 40% of those non-emergent calls do turn into a higher level of care, and so that's why it's important that our trained EMS folks are on scene and able to provide that transport. We are not talking about those transports that are not medical, where someone, perhaps in a wheelchair or for some other reason, needs a transport. They can call one of a dozen other folk in the community who provide that level of transport. So these are medical transports, and we are committed to providing the highest level of care for those individuals. The high level of performance that we impose upon ourselves and that the city's imposed upon us, I think is remarkable and admirable. If we provide pickup within one hour, 98% of the time, to non-emergency folks, I mean, that's pretty outstanding. I think both the city and the county should be talking about that in a very positive tone. That's excellent service. Now, we are going to try to make it all 100% within an hour, but as has been noted, it's pretty hard to be absolutely perfect on every incident that's called. But I think that this has proven itself to be a great partnership with the city. I think that not only do our counterparts in the city of Wichita, but Sedgwick County commissioners speak repeatedly about functional consolidation, about ways that we consolidate to save money and provide the best services for our citizens. And this is probably the crown jewel example of good cooperation between city and county governments and between consolidation. There's only one ambulance service, it's been doing a great job for 30 years, or whatever the length of time it's doing. We're continuing to invest more into the system. We are adding crews as we see necessary. We have plans to add two more EMS posts, both in the city of Wichita. So I want to point out the excellent job that's been done, our commitment to continue at that high level, and I believe our citizens, on the whole, are very pleased with the response that they're getting. It's reliable, we have the highest level of accreditations, and I think that, well, I just think folks appreciate that. We will abide by the contract. We will look to try to find those other carriers in the community who can provide non-emergent medical transport at the, somewhat the same level that we're providing. We want to make sure they're certified. We're not asking to meet the highest level at which we're certified, but we want them to have some credentialing. So we're going to have a good list of people, and I would want the citizens to know that we're not going to yield this service over to someone that we don't think is, that we think is incapable of providing our level of service. And we will abide by the rules of the contract, and that if we think we can't get them, make that pickup at a time, we'll call people off the list. It is a little disconcerting that when we've been providing this level of service and have been investing at the high level we have in EMS posts and personnel and doing a great job, that there would be any criticism of us at all. I guess that's what kind of, I don't figure that out. We're doing great, and I want the citizens of our county to know that as we go forward. This is said by some of my colleagues, been, you know, a difficult- This is said by some of my colleagues, been a difficult, a difficult process. And I know that some members of the city council say they just want freedom of choice. And we had freedom of choice 40 years ago, or whenever it was, when we had different ambulance services vying for it. And one of the reasons the county took it over, because it was chaos. It was a mess. There was all kinds of problems, even bordering on legal issues. So we've had a great system. We're doing well. And one really important comparison, I think, in our research as we talk this out, is that we found out that the city of, or in Johnson County, I believe that their per capita cost of emergency, their per capita cost of running their system is about $20 per capita in Johnson County. Ours is $5.78. We're doing a remarkable job here. And, you know, they've got more people in a smaller area, so we've got fewer people in a bigger area, and we're doing that. So to try to drive home the point, that not only have we excellent service and performance, but we're doing it very, very efficiently. And so my point is, we're doing a great job, and even under the terms of this contract, we're going to continue to do a great job. And a little chagrin that some of our folks at the city council think, they want to kind of tell us how to do our business, but nevertheless, we've got to this point, we're going to do a job, and I think I'm ready to sign off on the contract. I don't see it as being something that Mr. Hadley and his people can manage in a way that still provides great service to our citizens. So with that ramble, I'll ask if there's any other questions or comments. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, is that correct? Please call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye.
Mr. Hadley, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. And I would also thank through this process our manager and also Mr. Stoltz for their work and input in getting us to a resolution. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, consideration of a grant in the amount of $2,969,873 for the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services fiscal years 2018 to 2021 area plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Division of Aging. This is the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging Older Americans Act area plan. This is a new cycle, so it is for 2018 through 2021. This plan that you have before you outlines how those funds will be allocated and expended for fiscal year 2018, which begins October 1st, 2017. This is, as the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, we serve Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick senior citizens age 60 and older. And this is for, the grant amount is $2,969,873. Under the area plan, this is an allocation. The state gets federal dollars that come down, and then they're allocated to 11 area agencies on aging across the state based on an allocation formula that looks at our population, our numbers, our percentages, low-income and minority. So they set this funding up in titles, and that outlines how those funds can be spent. So under the administration funding, we have $95,980. Under Title III B Support and Community Services, $473,736. Title III C I is the Congregate Nutrition, and there are some additional funds in this, and that's state dollars and nutritional services incentive funds. So it's $735,627 federal, state dollars is $24,950, and the NSIP money is $58,235. Title III C II is the Home Delivered, also known as Meals on Wheels program, federal dollars $432,435, state dollars $697,596, and the NSIP of $161,103. Title III D is the smallest of the programs, and that is Health Promotion and Disease Prevention, $35,938. And then Title III E is our National Family Caregiver Support Program at $254,273. Now, this is an estimated budget. It's based on our current 2017 area plan budget. As you are aware, the federal budget has not been established yet, so we always use the previous year's, the current year's budget, and then when that allocation is announced, then we adjust the budget accordingly. So there is a required grant, I mean, required match of $175,619. Out of that, the Sedgwick County responsibility is $73,693. Our providers contribute to the match, as do Butler and Harvey County Departments on Aging, and they provide the remaining match. So the total sources of this grant are $3,145,492. We do have a Central Plains Aging Advisory Council. It's made up of members of all three county department on aging. So the members that you appoint to Sedgwick County Department on Aging Council, three of those are elected and serve on that. So that advisory council did review and approve this on March 29th. We've also had a public hearing where it was presented and opportunity for discussion. I have presented it to both the Butler County and the Harvey County Commissioners, who have reviewed it and provided their approval for the Sedgwick County as the governing board to sign off on that. There have been no major, no really major significant changes, other than one, and that was in the area of nutrition. So what we see statewide, locally, and nationally is some movement and trending that there are less utilization of the congregate nutrition sites and more of the home-delivered. There are less numbers with that. We've been seeing that for a long time, so we're able to move money between the two, and we have moved some of the funding allocation from the congregate program to the home-delivered. The home-delivered program serves a more senior population, a more frail, and a homebound population, and we're seeing more of that as nationally, the fastest-growing segment of the population is age 100-plus. So I will be happy to answer any questions you have on this, and would request that you approve the area plan and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Annette. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comment on this item? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
Move to approve the plan, authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any comment or question on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye.
Thank you, Annette. Next item, please.
Item E, consideration of a grant in the amount of $285,181 for the Continuation of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force funded by the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Mr. Chairman. Colonel Richard Powell with the Sheriff's Office. I've brought before you this morning for your consideration, a grant in the amount of $285,181, which will be used for the Continuation of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This funding being provided by the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. For the benefit of those commissioners that are new to the bench this year, I thought I would maybe provide a little bit of historical information for you to help you make a more informed and better decision, or a decision. The Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office is the grantee and administration focal point of the Kansas Internet Against Crimes Task Force. The Sheriff's Office uses ICAC as the acronym. The continuation program proceeds to fund one Sheriff's Office detective and one Wichita Police Department detective, who are both dedicated to the ICAC investigative portion of the program. The Sheriff's Office and the Police Department supplement ICAC staffing with their own respective budgets, and also have supervisory personnel, other detectives, other investigators, that also work together to support ICAC operations. Kansas ICAC also works directly with the Sedgwick County Exploited and Missing Children's Unit. Together, these units investigate all exploitation, missing human trafficking, physical and sexual abuse cases involving child victims. Our Kansas ICAC office here locally supports 39 other affiliate ICAC agencies across the state of Kansas. They serve locally some 500 and almost 4,000 residents of the county, and another collectively altogether, over 2.8 million residents throughout the state of Kansas. We've noticed that this residential count, the number of people that we support through this program, has increased about 1.1% over the last census. The affiliate agencies that I spoke of across the state include other law enforcement agencies, both city, county, and tribal enforcement agencies. I would also mention that Kansas has over 8,000 registered sex offenders on their rolls. 15% of them live in the greater Wichita-Sedgwick County area. ICAC also partners with state and federal prosecutors and other agencies to ensure proper prosecution of these cases that we are involved in. The state of Kansas has increased in the number of identified domestic minor sex trafficking cases. Specifically here locally at our EMCU unit, we have identified 61 victims and 49 suspects that are involved in domestic minor sex trafficking in the calendar year 2016. Year-to-date, only halfway through the year, we've identified 43 victims and 29 suspects, which is significantly higher at the halfway point than where we would have been for the same time, same period last year. The majority of these cases involve technology-facilitated prostitution. Additionally, we've not only seen the advertisement of these crimes across the internet, but the perpetrators also are utilizing a lot of social media to recruit victims. Kansas ICAC will continue to build relationships and list new task force affiliates and partners to combat the issue of child exploitation. Again, I've brought before you for your consideration this grant. A little bit of detail on the grant, again, covers the funding, which actually is a little bit different than what we have seen in previous year. There was a notification we received from the Department of Justice where they discontinued funding for about a three-month period, and they've went back now and picked that up in this new grant, which will cover the time period starting retroactively back to July 1st this year and through September 30th of next year. A portion of the funding that we're requesting your consideration on will be passed through to the city of Wichita, which will be used to reimburse their police department for the costs associated with their personnel that fall under this agreement in this funding matter. I don't really have anything else to add to my presentations, but I would again respectfully request your consideration and subsequent approval, and also stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Colonel Powell. Commissioners, do you have any question or comment? I don't see anyone wishing to speak. I would just make the comment that I appreciate the intensive effort with the resources we have to try to address this disease that we have in our community. And it's regrettable that in the culture of our country and even our local community, that this type of remedial and corrective action is necessary to find perpetrators of crimes against children. You know, this boggles your mind, almost makes no sense. How can that happen? But it does, and so I appreciate your effort. And this is also, when we previously talked about cooperation with our counterparts in the city of Wichita, another good example of how we cooperate intensively together to try to address this issue in our community. So I want to also offer my thanks that you all are committed to that effort. With that, Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Move to take the recommended action.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to take the recommended action regarding this grant. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Colonel. Next item.
Item F, amendments to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Knabel with Metropolitan Area Planning Department. I'm here to bring you a proposed amendment to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. The comprehensive plan, the community investments plan, the current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015. It contains a strategy for annual monitoring, lays out the things that the planning department will review. One of those is an annual discussion with the cities in Sedgwick County regarding a map that's contained in the plan called the Urban Growth Areas Map. This map is a policy document. It's not prescriptive in the extent that it exists in the community investments plan. It makes a designation for all of the cities so that they can work better together, those areas where each city is intending to extend municipal services over the next 20 or so years, and where corporate annexations into those cities would occur. That map is also then tied through the zoning code to this urban area of influence, which this commission established in 2015, provides for a method of conversation and input into requests for zoning changes. In 2016, this commission expanded the urban area of influence for the city of Garden Plain from the, I would say, golden color, the darker color that's not gray, the gray is the current city limits, to the lighter tan color. That was an action that was taken. What Garden, or Garden Plain is requesting is that that urban area of influence also be their urban growth area, which is what the zoning code states the urban areas of influence should be, is the urban growth areas established by the comprehensive plan. So this amendment of the comprehensive plan really is enacting something that the county commission has already approved, just in another document. The second recommended change to this urban growth area map actually involves the elimination of a couple of areas of urban growth area for the city of Mount Hope, which are shown kind of in the brownish color on this map, and then the addition of a small area at the south end of their corporate limits for future commercial and industrial growth. They're requesting this change because this matches their recently adopted comprehensive plan and the area that their comprehensive plan covers. The planning commission recommended, voted to recommend approval of both of these changes to the urban growth area map, and recommend that you adopt a resolution adopting this amendment to the comprehensive plan. And I'll stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Scott. Commissioners, are there any comment or question? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the Mount Hope. If we approve this and the growth area expands, what happens to the urban area of influence?
The urban area of influence, according to the language of the zoning code, would automatically adjust to what this urban growth area is. So the two areas in brown, the one in the northeast and the one in the southwest, would be removed. The area in light tan at the very south end would be added.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment or question? Seeing none, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both of these communities are in my district, and I served on MAPC when we adopted the comprehensive plan, and it's designed to be a living document that changes with time. And so I recommend that we adopt the resolution, amending the comprehensive plan, recommend the metropolitan area planning as recommended by the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I will second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ranzau?
In the past, I've been opposed to expanding the urban area of influence. I believe it adds redundant and unnecessary bureaucracy to property owners in that area. I continue to be opposed to that. I continue to be opposed to that, and my vote will reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other comment? I see none, so Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. Thank you, Scott. Next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July thirteenth, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The July thirteenth meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts results in three items for your consideration. Item number one is for each of the hydrostatic drive side cast sweepers for fleet management. This recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Berry Tractor and Equipment in the amount of one-hundred-ninety-nine thousand, eight-hundred-sixty-four dollars, and establish contract pricing for the labor, parts, and freight at the rates listed above for three years. Item number two, three each of the tandem axle dump trucks with their attachments for fleet management, and this recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Roberts Truck Center of Kansas LLC doing business as Summit Truck Group in the amount of five-hundred-thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred-seventeen dollars, and also establish contract pricing for labor, parts, and freight at the rates listed for three years. Our final item, item number three, is patient transportation for various county departments, and this recommendation is to accept the overall low proposal from Apple Bus Company at the rates listed, and establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
All right, Joe, thank you. We do have a comment. Commissioner Ranzau?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts with the exception of item two.
Item two?
Will we have further discussion on that?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the bid board recommendations with the exception of item two. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. So now we have item two for discussion. Commissioner Ranzau, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I'll just say, we're going to replace three dump trucks that are about five years old, have around one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I've had some questions with staff earlier. I asked for some maintenance information. I'm not sure I've received that yet. If I have, I missed it in the email, but I have got some information as far as the mileage, et cetera. I know we looked at private sector entities, and they're using the trucks for two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand miles, which is twice as long as what we're using, so I have some concerns about going forward with this particular item.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I noticed that Penny is here. Did you have a specific question for her on any of the information that you wanted?
No.
Penny Pollen, Fleet Management. The maintenance dollars were in that email that I sent yesterday. I have the year make and the miles, and then the dollar amounts right after the miles. That would be unscheduled maintenance for the past five years.
Okay, I thought that was the amount we were going to get back from Purple Wave, because we'd asked that amount as well.
True.
So that's the amount there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Penny, you might stay up there. I appreciate you getting back to me about the question about what does the private sector do? So historically, you were getting rid of dump trucks at around a hundred thousand miles, is that correct? And we've pushed these to a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles?
Correct. Well, actually, they were, I believe, before, the directors before me, they were a hundred thousand, they got pushed to a hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Okay. And then you've pushed it up to one-fifty?
No, these are just over the extended, the life mileage.
Okay. Piggybacking on what Commissioner Ranzau said, so when you looked at the private sector companies and the two that had them here in town that responded to you, they both said they kept them between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred thousand miles?
Yes, sir.
What do you feel comfortable pushing these machines to? Like I told you, I just, I sold my car last month with three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand miles on it. So I know, I know that, and it sold in one day, but I know cars and vehicles and things can go longer. What type of a plan are we going to put in place to match what the private sector's doing? Because they're doing that without a fleet management system as robust as ours. Some of them might have a fleet management company they work with, but we have staff on hand to take care of these machines. I would contend you do better with maintenance than most private companies do. So why can't we get closer to that, Penny?
I don't know that we can't. I just do not have any historical data to back it up. I'm merely, I'm following the replacement policy. I would like to do more research and perhaps keep one of the trucks to do a test and continue to use it and see how many more miles we can get out of it.
Can, in this contract that we would agree today, are we agreeing to sell these trucks in this contract if we approve it?
No.
Or will that come later? How do, how can we use one of these trucks that you are going to potentially be selling on Purple Wave? How would we keep one in the system?
Well, the two will go to Purple Wave. We'll just keep one at one of the yards and have one of them use it according to how they're using it now.
I do not feel comfortable moving forward today with this unless I have assurance that we can do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. For my clarification, Commissioner, unless we have assurance that we will keep one of the vehicles for a test case?
Yes.
All right, we can include that in a motion if it comes to that point. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't actually know what my colleagues were thinking and some of the information that may have happened. It may have happened as they continue to think about this, but I had a discussion with Penny as well. And I also have concerns about, I guess, what I would call the triggers to make choices to sell these trucks and to buy new trucks. And just for my own information, please remind me, how many of these trucks do we currently have in our fleet?
We have twenty-two.
Twenty-two trucks, okay. You know, if we sell them on Purple Wave, they typically go for around fifty thousand?
Correct.
Fifty thousand. So if we sold all three trucks, we'd get about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And I see that these trucks, the unit cost is a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. And I guess, as I continue to think about our discussion about this, I think it'd be, rather than using triggers that have not been proven, I guess I would, I would almost feel not, I would almost feel better if we would use not just one truck, but all three trucks for our test. What I'd like to do potentially is just, I'll probably make a motion in just a minute to approve two of the three, if that's acceptable to do so, and keep three trucks parked in different yards, let them park the new trucks, some will try not to use the new ones, continue to use the old trucks as much as possible as they have been in the past. And should we have a breakdown, we have a backup vehicle. We're not going to be in a situation where we can't provide the work or a service because of a lack of a vehicle, because we did buy two of the three. They're not all three going to break at one time. And that would allow us to get some data regarding how many miles these can go, what kind of breakdowns would happen. I mean, the worst things probably would be something like a transmission or an engine would fail. My guess is probably a hundred thousand miles more on these trucks before that, something like that would happen. And even if it did happen, these trucks still have value, they can still be repaired. So we would basically forego a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of revenue at this time. We would get data that's very, very valuable, because I think our tire program needs to be, I guess, challenged and based on data rather than someone's ideas. We have not actually ever done a study like this. And so I do know we have different kinds of trucks. We have different manufacturers, and I know they may perform differently, but I guess getting some data would be very helpful. And if these three trucks are all the same, that would be less ideal. If they're different than each other, that would be better. But I guess I would like to make a motion that we would approve two of the three vehicles. And along with that, I'd like to see us keep three vehicles and continue to use those as primary vehicles and try to not use the newer vehicles so that we can get data on them. And then based on what happens in the future, we can continue to refine and hone our policy to something that is actually as efficient as possible. Because I think what's going to end up happening is, we will sell these vehicles, and we will see, somebody in the private sector will probably buy them for fifty thousand dollars and drive them another a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles at least. I have no doubt that's likely to happen. So to clarify my motion, I'd like to make a motion we would purchase two of the three vehicles, and we would retain these three vehicles for a study to define our policy with data on, based on what happens down the road.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I think that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I ask a question for clarification? We're going to buy two as backups, is that the intent?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the concern was, they said if we didn't, excuse me. That's for the frog in my throat. If we didn't buy any vehicles at all, that they felt like it would be, it would put us in a situation where we may not be able to rely on these vehicles to actually make all of our commitments in terms of maintenance and work that has to be done around the county. If one was to break, it would cause a burden potentially on our public works, they would not have the ability to do their job. And so to that extent, I think that the point is, I would like to, it's about the same amount of money, we would forego a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in revenue at this time, but not spend a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars at this time, so it's roughly equivalent. And that lets us do the greatest amount of study possible on three vehicles, but also prepares us to do the work if necessary on vehicles that are dependable and roadworthy should these three vehicles prove to be a problem. Again, the theory is these are not going to be trustworthy vehicles. And to that extent, if they do break down, they're going to break down somewhere in Sedgwick County, all they have to do is get on the radio or cell phone, call, get a ride back to another vehicle, and we can deal with that in terms of a tow and a repair as a side issue. It would not cause undue burden to the county to keep these vehicles and let that study happen. And this was a big discussion at the state level. Some of the people at state level were driving across the state of Kansas, and some of these people are traveling, are very vulnerable people, and they're far away from home, and they break down, it'd be a great concern. That's not really true in this case. They're going to be within our county. We have a standby vehicle ready to go. I think if we do this, do what I've asked for in this motion. And so again, my motion would be based on the fact that I try to get the most amount of data out of these three vehicles and not cause an undue burden to our public works by not having vehicles ready to go should they actually break down as, I guess, is possible. So I hope that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that explanation, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question for Joe. The contract that you, or the bid that you put out was for three vehicles, and so whoever was bidding on that bid on the fact that they were going to have a contract to procure three vehicles and sell them to us, so their pricing is based on that.
Yes, sir.
If we cut it back to two, what's that do to that?
It would be at the discretion of the vendor. We would contact them and let them know the will of the commission and ask them if it would be okay to proceed with the same pricing. That's what we'd like to do. But it would be at the decision of the vendor.
So what we don't know right now is what the impact of that would be, because our next bid was like a hundred-and-eighty, almost a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars per vehicle.
Right.
So it could end up costing us more by not purchasing that third vehicle.
That is a possibility.
That presents a little bit of uncertainty to me that I'm concerned about, but I'm not really different than the comments that have been made from several of the other commissioners on this. And Penny will tell you that I was concerned when she came in and briefed me, and actually, Commissioner Ranzau was with us when we were briefed on this. I spent a lot of my life in logistics, and I'm not going to second-guess you on this by any means, but these are Peterbilt trucks, and if you take a look at this truck, these things are designed to go a long ways. A hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles, they're just starting to get warmed I am not convinced that we're doing the best thing that we can do at a hundred-and-thirty thousand miles on a great big Peterbilt truck. What's that thing turn over to zero at? What's the odometer? Is it a million miles before it goes back to zero?
I don't have the answer to that.
I would bet that it's a million miles before it goes to zero. So I really think that there's data out there, there was a comment made, that maybe we ought to keep a couple of these to develop our own data. I can't believe that as large as the United States is and as many people that are running fleets of trucks, that there is not data out there that can tell you how long that a Peterbilt truck is going to be able to run before that you're going to need to start thinking about replacement in a major fleet. And a major fleet is completely different than somebody that's got one or two trucks. We've got people out there that are running major fleets of trucks, that's got hundreds of them, so that there's data out there already. So maintaining these trucks to try and get our own data on two trucks, I don't know if it's going to be a valid test of what it takes. You really need a big fleet and a number of big fleets across the country in order to be able to decide what the mileage needs to be, what the usage needs to be, and it's not just mileage on these trucks. There's an hour meter on these things, too, I'm certain, that tell how long that that engine has been running. So it's not only miles, it's also hours. So coming in telling me how many miles it's got on it and it's time to replace it, if this truck is used for certain tasks that require as high engine hours, I mean, it could be time to replace it, but I can't tell, because we're not even using that as a metric. So I'm not sure that I'll support the motion as it is, because I don't know that keeping two trucks is valuable to us. If we're going to buy some new trucks, we might as well recover some of the cost for the taxpayers of the ones we've got right now. But in the future, I'm probably not going to be as amiable to accepting what you're telling me unless we've got some strict data that tells us this is where, actually, we need to develop a policy. This is where we need to replace these vehicles based on mileage and hours on the vehicle. Or if there's significant damage to it, you know, if somebody runs it off the road, obviously we're going to probably have to replace it. I don't know that we've got a good policy right now that's based on mileage and hours, and I don't think that keeping two trucks is going to be valuable to us. I don't think we'll get the data that we need, and I appreciate the other commissioners talking about trying to do this, to gather the data, but I think there's a better way of doing it than trying to maintain a couple trucks that may or may not prove out what we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our county engineer, may I ask you for a comment on this discussion?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Spears, Assistant County Manager for Public Works. Just want to say, I'm not sure I understood Commissioner Howell exactly, but if you keep, say you kept the three trucks to study them, and you bought two more, but you bought two trucks, that is called an addition to the fleet. So we would have to have a, so instead of having twenty-two trucks, we'd have twenty-four trucks. The other thing is, we pay rental, a type of rental, we pay budget, we pay money into fleet for every truck every month, so that when the fund builds up, we can replace those trucks. So it's, there's a few more complications here than what meets the eye. The other thing I want to say is, so you can take these Peterbilt trucks and study them, but who's to say on the next bid that comes in, if it's going to be a Peterbilt truck that's low, it could be a Ford truck, it could be any other kind of truck. So you're really only studying this. I really think there's got to be data out in the field about studies like this, but I mean, it can be done what you want to do, and I know Penny is following the policy as it is now, and if you want to change the policy, I'm sure she'll follow it then, and so will we. You just have to remember, when a truck is down, I mean, that affects us as far as getting our work done, and trucks are a premium thing with us. It's one of the bigger, they're always busy, they're always hauling something, if one yard or another needs trucks, we have even a truck foreman who delegates out the trucks to different places depending on what's going on. We might have some coal mix going on, might be needing to send some gravel or some rocks somewhere. So just, we will live with whatever you decide to do, but I just wanted to throw that all into the mix there. It can get, you're going to add to the fleet if you buy some but don't trade in the others.
Thank you, Mr. Spears, and that's one of the comments I was going to make, that do we, does this violating policy if we just start adding vehicles? But I'm trying to figure out now whether I think it's better to not buy any of these and just keep using these and collect the data, and then if we see that we've got to make a change, we'll have to make a change. But we have commissioners here that want to speak, and I'll try to go with folks who hadn't spoken recently. Commissioner Ranzau? Ranzau.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Uh, when, how long do we have to make a decision on this particular bid?
This was treated as, uh, a proposal. According to the record, it'd be 120 days.
Okay. Um, and as far as those, uh, maintenance costs, I'd like to have each of those itemized out as well.
Okay. How would you like them sorted? Do you want them itemized out by?
By truck. I mean, I mean, you have a total amount.
I have a total for each truck.
Right. Do you have, can you i- itemize that out as far as what the repairs were that added up to that?
I can, yes.
Okay. And just to give some history, I, I believe it was 2011 when we revisited this policy. Um, we had some data back then. Uh, and, uh, my understanding was we did, we, we had some data. Like you said, we, the policy was 100,000. I thought the data then said that we could go further than what we actually did, um, on perhaps dump trucks, some others. Uh, and my memory could be failing me, but I'm going to go back and check. I, I remember having that discussion. We made some leadway, but we didn't go, for some reason, we couldn't get enough votes to extend it out as far as what we thought the data showed. Um, you know how things work kind of sometimes, but, uh, I'm confident that, this is too soon for these particular vehicles given this data, the history. Uh, so I'm not prepared to support purchasing any trucks, uh, at this time, even though I understand the intent. I think we have 22 trucks. There should be data on fleets out there. We have 22 trucks. The more you have, you can keep all that data and I'm just, I'm just, the pri, the fact that the private sector has incentive to do things in a cost-effective manner and they're using them twice as long as what we are. That means we could be spending half the amount of money over time on, on these particular type of trucks and, I, I, that's where I'm at today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, uh, make a substitute motion, um, that we delay decision on this until we gather more information. Like Commissioner Dennis was talking about, um, there has to be data, um, national data that, that we can get before we make this, um, decision. So that, that'd be my motion to delay.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second. Um, is that all, Commissioner?
That's all, sir.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, please.
One of the reasons that we have the replacement policy is so that you can forecast your budget, operational and your vehicle equipment replacement. One thing I would like to add, although I don't have historical data to give you, in the past 25 years since I've been at Fleet, they have reduced, we've reduced technicians by five in the heavy equipment shop because we have improved the average vehicle equipment age. So there, there was more maintenance because the equipment was older. So we've reduced our staff by five because the equipment has, we, they're newer, they're working, they're more efficient.
Thank you. That's, uh, important information. Appreciate it. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just for clarity on the motion, is this a motion to table this decision for, we have some time to, to, to think about this and get some more data. So this is a motion to table this item for a little while and bring it back up if we need to?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I understand that. I, I'm glad to support that. I would simply just make a couple of comments based on, uh, Commissioner Dennis made, made some point, a, a, a couple of points here about the money. But let me just, let me just ask, make, make a point that we have $4 million worth of vehicles. You take 22 times this cost, it's roughly $4 million worth of vehicles that we're replacing roughly every five years. Um, if we, if we, again, these, these are roughly five years old. Maybe that's not typical. So I heard that Commissioner Ranzau said that. Is that true? She's giving me some head nods back there.
I'd have to do some more research to validate that number. I don't believe we're buying $4 million.
Okay. Well, anyway, 22 trucks times that unit cost is roughly $4 million. And, uh, if we, if we did not accept this bid today and we had to change the bid to the more expensive bid, there's three other bids on the sheet about the same price, 185. That's $10,000 more. Uh, I'm sorry, $5,000 more per vehicle. But we're spending $36,000 a year on the, on, on running these vehicles. And so if we were able to extend a vehicle by a year, we would save, comparing those two things, $30,000. I think we, we would be, uh, we ought to be eager to get this data. And I'm not sure what the data is based on right now. When I've asked you the question in my office, we didn't really have books. We look, we didn't look, we weren't looking at books trying to figure out, you know, where the national standards were for these trucks. It's just more of like, here's what we do, normally do in Sedgwick County. You know, it was only based on any data that I could, I could put my thumb on. And so whether it be hours on the engine or, or miles driven, um, or age, uh, those are, we're using some, certain triggers right now, but I'm not sure that those triggers are correct. If we were able to extend the life of these vehicles by a year, it'd be absolutely worth the, the effort to get there. By the way, if we didn't make a purchase of, of two vehicles today, and I understand that there's some complications with that, I get that. I think those could be resolved. Uh, but nevertheless, if we make the purchase today, there's going to be a short time, we would have more than 22 vehicles. We would receive the new ones, we would sell the old ones. So, uh, obviously we can keep more than 22 for at least a four, for a time while they're, before they go to auction. So that's obviously, that's something we, we obviously would do. But I thi, I think those complications could be, could be resolved. I think that the, uh, the likely outcome of this, hopefully, my opinion is, is, is we ought to develop this, this, uh, um, data collection, try to get that data on these three vehicles. I hate to see this, see us give these up. And my, my opinion is if we're not going to purchase these vehicles today, I'm not sure we're going to come back to this and visit this at any time in the future. I think keeping these three vehicles to get that data is probably the most important thing we have to decide on. And, uh, so to me, that's the, buying two vehicles, I, my opinion was a way for us to be sensitive to the, the needs of public works. If we're not willing to do that today, I'm not sure we come back to this in the future, but I think keeping the three vehicles is absolutely critically important. We have got to get that data. And if there's data available nationally, that should have been presented to us previously. Um, I, I asked the question earlier, was not able to get the answer. So, um, I'll support the su, the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think we're about ready to vote, uh, but I want to let you know that, uh, I do support the substitute motion. Uh, I, I wouldn't have supported the original motion that was made because I think now we're trying to make policy from the bench on the fly and I don't think that that's a good way of, of making policy. Uh, so I, I think we've got a little bit of time. Uh, we can go back and take a look at the policy and make a wise decision and we can move forward. So I'll vote in favor of the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Manager, did you want to make a comment on this discussion?
Yep, please, uh, Chairman. I'd like to just, uh, like that opportunity. I think it, it's more than kind of just dump trucks. It kind of goes, it transcends to the entire major equipment fleet, um, policy decision because what affects this decision's the same thing that affects fire trucks or tractors or whatever that is. So I'd like the, the ability to take this back and, and let me analyze this and let the staff chew on it. And then we come back to you with, with probably an update to our major equipment lifecycle, lifecycle process and, and policy and bring that back to you. So we owe you that. Uh, that's my recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So as I understand it, the substitute motion is, is that we just defer this. Is that correct? All right. Now, um, we would, we're assuming that we'll get some information back before this bid expires so that we can still capture this bid. Uh, and we, and you said we had 120 days.
And I wanted to clarify, it's 120 days from the date of the bid, uh, proposal opening, which was May 30th. So we have until September 30th. That'd give us the four months.
All right.
Just to give you the accurate timeline.
Well, I don't want to, don't want to lose what we have, but I want to make a good decision and I think this will allow us that opportunity. So Commissioners, are there any other, uh, comment on a motion to defer? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We all understand and have our marching orders, I guess, so we can, we'll do that. Um, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mike, Mike Scholes County Manager recommend you approve consent agenda items hotel through RMEO.
Okay, Commissioner Ranzau?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item L, which I'd like to have, I have a few questions on.
We have a second from Commissioner Dennis. Um, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. Now, item L, Commissioner Ranzau, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I have some questions. I, all right, you're going to help me out?
I'm going to try, Commissioner.
Okay. First of all, I, I think I know what this is for, wh, what areas are using this. But tell me what areas we are using this for. And I noticed that, um, in 2016, we got $150,000 and 2017, it says at 40%, 63,000. Tell me what that, what, why you're saying at 40%. Has something changed about this? I guess that's what I'm interested in finding out.
Good morning. Um, Commissioner Steve Stonehouse with the Division of Corrections. At 40% of the year, at 40% of the year, they had, we have collected 63,384 dollars.
Okay, so you.
So that's what that.
You expect to get close to the same amount? Okay.
Yes, sir. So these are, um, in our juvenile facilities, in the juvenile detention facility and juvenile residential facility, we operate kitchens to feed the residents and these are, um, reimbursed meals for breakfast, lunch and snacks if we follow the guidelines as put forth by Kansas Department of Education.
Well, and that was the, I'd had some discussion in the past with Mark Masterson about this program. I s, I know there's a lot of requirements for this and requirements that he'd like to, would have liked to eliminate. And so the question is, is the amount we're getting back cost effective as far as all the time that we, we put into? And I think at that time he thought it was. But when I saw this 40% 63,000, I thought maybe they were now reimbursing at a lower amount, we're bringing a lot less. But maybe it would be closer to where it wouldn't be cost effective anymore to, you know, because of the time. I, I know there's lots of things.
Right. There are, there are requirements such as content of the meals and, um, some of the food that we have to purchase, there's requirements of, of the vendors have to be Buy American First. And if, if something gets slipped in from another country, then that gets a bit messy. But we've got it pretty much down to a science now about how we, how we do our ordering with our vendor. But, um, we are monitored. We have audits by KSDE as far as the food goes. Um, our reimbursements are going down because our population is going down and we just reimburse about, by actual meals served.
So there's a lot of documentation.
Yes, sir.
That goes along. That's really why, kind of, all the time it takes to keep track of everything and all the requirements you have to do beyond just getting the food and, you know, serving it. So I, I, I'll make the assumption that we still feel like the amount of money we're getting back still compensates us enough for the extra work that we have to do. But if we ever get to that point that we think it's not, then please let us know and then that may, you know.
And we do consider that every year when we go through this, through this process because it is, it's arduous and, um, we still feel like it's worthwhile.
All right. Well, like I said, basically it was this 40%. I wanted to make, clarify and hadn't had time to talk to anyone beforehand. So I'll be so, be supportive and I'll make the motion that we approve the item.
Second. Thank you. Motion and a second to prove, to approve item L of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye. Next item?
Legislative issues.
I think we have nothing to discuss today. Is that correct? All right. Um, and I know, Commissioners, we have a Fire District meeting that we need to take. So at this time, I will recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the, the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body of Fire District Number One. Um, Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Unruh?
Present. Uh, first item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't, haven't had anyone sign up to speak in the Fire District Agenda, so next item, please.
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2018 Fire District Number One Budget.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes County Manager, as indicated, today's the first public hearing on the 2018 Fire District Budget. Uh, the public publication you filed last week, uh, was, included a budget of 17,957,696 and an ad valorem property tax levy of 16,458,571, which is approximately equivalent to 18.414 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. With that, I push it back to you for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, are there any comments or questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask for public input comment on the Fire District Budget. I see no one rising to speak and mainly the usual suspects are in the audience here. So, no one rising to speak. That being the case, we will close the public hearing and, um, with no vote or no declaration. So the meeting is closed. Um, for the record, um, is there anything else to come for the Fire District? Nothing. So therefore, we will adjourn Fire District Number One meeting and call back to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners from July 19. And, um, at this time, I believe we are ready for other Commissioners. Are there any other comments that you'd like to make during this portion of the meeting? Commissioner Ranzau?
I just want to give a quick update, uh, as far as, initially I've been working with, uh, Judge Riddell's Boys Ranch in Lake Afterne as far as the accountrance. We'd originally been told by the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks that they were, that the JRBR facility should not have been included in the boundary. Now I believe that, and they were going to do the paperwork, now I believe that's been stopped. But I haven't been able to get a straight answer from them as to who's made that decision up the chain. I will continue to try and find out. I think it may have been at the federal level. Uh, I'm a little confused as to why I can't get a direct answer to that. Um, but I'll continue to, I know the Chairman won't me continue to be persistent in this endeavor and so I'll do so. Uh, I just want a straight answer so that I can tell the people, you know, why we're not doing this. Uh, we had a wonderful solution, or at least it would have been a wonderful, regardless of what we would have done anyway, we had stepped in the right direction. Now that's being stopped. I just want to know why and, or who, who did it so I can talk to the right person. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Um, nor do I. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, is that all?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, uh, congratulate, um, Brigadier General Albert Miller on his promotion yesterday. And, uh, he is in the process of, of leading the 22nd Area Fueling Wing at McConnell Air Force Base. He's, uh, served with honor. He's a tremendous individual. He's been totally engaged in this, in the, in our community. Everyone has been seeing him around the community. He's, uh, very engaged. Um, three of us, it's Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Unruh and myself, did attend that ceremony yesterday where the changing of command happened between, uh, at that time was Colonel Miller and was handed over to Colonel Olson. I want to congratulate him as well. Um, I don't know how old Colonel Olson is, but he is a, uh, obviously one that's very fast moving in his career, uh, to take command of McConnell Air Force Base. He's, uh, done a tremendous job in advancing his career. I think he'll be a four star before he's done. But, uh, Colonel Olson, I think is going to be great for our community. I'm looking forward to get to know him a little bit. And I got to meet his family yesterday. I just wanted to congratulate both of those gentlemen for, uh, for their respective positions in our community, McConnell Air Force Base, which we, we do, we depend on them so much in our community. And of course, it's in my district. And so I just wanted to, to make that point that, uh, that General Miller's on his way out. I want to thank him for his service and, uh, welcome Colonel Olson, uh, to the lead position as Command of the 22nd Area Fueling Wing. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, today at noon, we are dedicating the Meridian Street Project. Uh, I'll be joining, uh, Councilmember Jeff Bluebaugh at the corner of Harry and Meridian. Um, it's a, like I mentioned last week, it's a project that's been going on almost six years that I initiated when I was on the Wichita City Council. So I'm very proud of it. Um, it was very necessary and it's a beautiful street. Uh, everyone hasn't had the opportunity to get down, uh, on Meridian. But most importantly, aside from the street being nice and not patchworked, um, the flooding issue has been resolved and, uh, that was the major, major source of frustration for many of the residents in South Wichita. So, uh, it, it's a good milestone for the city of Wichita and I'm excited to be there today. So, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I just comment that, uh, last weekend, on Saturday, uh, my wife and I were able to go